Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to open the November the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three Bethel Plan Zoning Commission meeting and I'd like to start with a pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And ask the commission to introduce themselves. Bob, can we start with you?
Bob Legner, Commissioner.
Rob, alternate.
Ken Parsons.
Doug Uni, alternate.
Penny Kessler, Commissioner.
Ken Stevens, Commissioner.
Kitty Grant, Commissioner.
Paul Shanley, Commissioner.
Ezra Curtis, alternate.
Stan.
Beth Kavagno, Planning.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Thank you. I'd like to read the use of personal electronic devices policy that the commission has set. Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by the commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. We'll start this evening's meeting with resuming the public hearing for Begel LLC, one fifteen Cutnam Park Road. You're representing the applicant.
Can I speak first?
Certainly.
Sorry, I was just gonna say I have nothing to say.
Um, I'd like to speak first. I, I think the question was for leaving the room open. So I could make some comments in regards to this. We did go over it a little bit. But it was in regards to the use of bed and breakfast and personal service establishment in using the overlay zone. Um, my, I had a few concerns in regards to that because you have to remember that it also applies to the R forty and the R eighty zone. Um, along those same lines. Um, in regards to this, I think it's important that we make a few amendments. Anytime you're dealing with text amendments or even map amendments to say to a, to a degree, you always have the opportunity to take the whatever regulation is proposed and I call it make it your own. So my recommendations in regards to this is to make it a minimum of five acres. So that eliminates a lot of properties within these two zones, but also require that it shall have frontage on and direct access to a state highway. When I looked at the plan of conservation development, you know, we have major arteries and minor arteries and things like that. But I was uncomfortable having it even included in what we would consider a major artery like Plum Trees Road, um, Old Hollyville Road and roads of that nature. I think making it exclusively only for having property frontage on a major highway is important. So my recommendation to you would be to add these two subsections regarding if you were to desire to add a bed and breakfast and a personal service establishment to the overlay zone. My recommendations is to, to add these two amendments to it. And I thank you again for leaving the hearing open for me.
So do you have a question?
Yes.
Um, minimum of five acres, understood. Um, maximum of twelve bedrooms. Is there a minimum?
No.
Okay. And why the number twelve?
Um, I felt that that was the most, when you're, when you're dealing with a bed and breakfast, that it's really supposed to have a home type of feeling. So I'm thinking, I was thinking in terms of what would be acceptable overall. And so I was thinking of, um, you know, twelve would be a reasonable, much more so because again, you have to, it's a special permit. You have to deal with parking and things of that nature. So if you want to change it and make it less or more, please do. I was just picking, obviously, it was just really picking the number twelve, thinking of bedrooms and uses pertaining to it and make, and again, it's a commercial adventure by a property owner. I wanted to work for them.
Understood. And, and just the last question, when you were just speaking. Excuse me, my ears are funky. When you were just speaking, you were talking about a major highway?
Yes.
But here you refer specifically to a state.
A state highway, the most major highway.
In this area.
A, a major highway is to me, if I said major highway, I should have said state highway.
Okay, understood. Great.
Okay.
Thank you. I know I didn't, I'm one of the, I'm aware to change this. Do we have to have a public hearing to hear these?
No.
I should've said.
I have a question, Ken. I have a question. Uh, do we want to say a specific state highway or any state highway?
Any state highway.
We can't say this route fifty-eight?
Uh, if, we have Route fifty-eight, we have Route fifty-three, we have Route, um, three oh two.
Right.
And when you think about it, when you look at Route three oh two, that's Greenwood Avenue, going out to Milwaukee and such. There are no five acre pieces associated with that.
How about, how about King Lake?
Uh, it has to be a minimum of five acres and King Lake is not five acres.
Okay.
King Lake, the gray building on.
It's the hotel hotel.
You mean kind of the lake? It's not five acres?
No, the lake does not belong to the property.
Okay.
The lake has no ownership.
There we go.
Good questions. Anything else?
Okay. Peter, did you want to speak on that?
Sure, just one comment. Um, just remember that these changes are to the Neighborhood Services Overlay District, which is in the regulations. But in order for it to apply to any particular piece of property, you have to do a map amendment, which you have the ultimate discretion over. So I think that's, uh, suggested changes are perfectly reasonable and they're, they work for us certainly. Uh, but just remember it doesn't automatically now apply to any property touching a state highway. You have to do a map amendment to make it apply. But thanks.
Which is also part of this application.
Yes.
Starting math of it. Any questions from the public? There, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hello, everyone. Frank Carr, thirty-two Dymar.
Come up so they can see you on the camera.
He can't hear you, sorry.
And I couldn't hear you.
Jimmy here.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
This is dressed up today.
That's right.
Frank Carr, thirty-two Dymar Road. I'm just good, I was, wanted to come to the meeting just to see what was happening because there's another piece of property that it butts to that, that goes all the way up to Dymar Road. And with the five acre, um, stipulation, I think takes care of everything that I was even thinking about. So I just want to make sure that, that, and you guys kind of agree to that. Um, that would, we get an issue that they can't access. Even if they put in some kind of footbridge or something or weir or whatever, that they wouldn't be able to build, use that property in conjunction with this.
It has to have immediate frontage on a state highway. It doesn't mean that property can't be built on that you're making reference to.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as the answer for you though.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, sure.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sproil Braden, twenty Colonial Drive. Just a quick question. When you say bedroom, is that implying a single occupant or can it have double occupants?
It does not specify the occupancy.
So if you have twelve, you could theoretically have twenty-four people, thirty-six people. It's just a question.
It, it depends on the size of the structure and, and, um, what the, you know, the room size is and things like that. I mean, could you? Uh, do hotels have, you know, when I look at a bed and breakfast, it, it may be discretionary on my part, but I look at a bed and breakfast as one room with either two single beds in it or one bed for a couple.
Right, and this is going to be septic system?
Yes.
So would that not enter into the permitting and the calculations for sizing the fields?
Yes. So, um, for those that aren't you, that may not be aware, Sproil is going to be joining the board next month. Um, and I'm, I just want to point that out and say welcome. I appreciate you coming to the meeting. Diane Ryan also is here. Um, but anyway, Sproil, this is a very, um, what we call a legislative part of this whole scheme. What, uh, dealing with septics and wells and driveways and parking and the structure itself and, um, all those other items. If the commission, if you as the commission were to approve this this evening, the next step would be a site plan application. And that's where the applicant would come in with all of the particulars of what they want to do. And then the discretion is used under special permit to decide, well, no, that's too big. It should be smaller, things like that. But that's what a special permit is really giving them discretion.
Thanks for.
No problem, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Any other questions in the room? Any questions from our desk in Zoom? Okay, commission, any other questions for the applicant?
Does this apply to the downtown area or is this only, okay?
I mean, it could apply to the downtown area. If there was a parcel, um, it could apply into, onto three oh two Greenwood Avenue, if there was a parcel containing five acres.
Okay. So it would preclude, say, like one of the big Victorians in the downtown area from.
There's a different regulation for them. There is a strictly a bed and breakfast regulation for the residential zone in particular the downtown area. So yes, there is a restriction where you can have a bed and breakfast.
Okay, and, and this wouldn't.
This doesn't.
Interfere with that. Okay, great. That was my only question.
Just a brief comment on that. The Neighborhood Services Overlay District can only be applied in the R forty and R eighty zone. So there's no R forty and R eighty in the downtown anyway.
For the record, Peter Olson.
For the record, Peter Olson. Yes, sorry. Um, there is out on Route three oh two, obviously. But as Beth pointed out, I think most of the downtown, you could have a bed and breakfast on the existing.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Um, I actually have a question. Um, uh, this might be getting ahead of, uh, we're not at the site plan, but did you guys have a thought of how many bedrooms you're going to take now? Take the, the thing showing every door last night or was it seven? Eight?
Yes, Peter Olson for the applicant. Our plan right now is for eight rooms.
And any idea how many, um, employees that you're looking at daily or, we're getting, we're getting too far ahead here. Okay. Um, and then the question for Beth, if the minimum of five acres, would that be buildable acres or just five acres in total?
I didn't specify buildable acres.
Is that something we should look at?
I, in respect to, to, um, a minimum of five acres, when you look at it and you're thinking of topography and white lens, things of that nature, I think I'm, I'm comfortable in thinking that that would all be handled during a site plan application. That I, you know, I mean, let's face it, if you want to put in a bed and breakfast and you're limited to the scope of how many rooms and things like that, you're not going to spend a hundred and fifty to two hundred grand to blow up a something.
Yeah, no.
In order to better it. It was a very good point.
Yeah.
Um, and I agree with you.
I like, I like these, um, ideas and.
But I did think of that too.
Just popped in my head.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, I have another question.
Yeah. Anything else? Right, then I'm going to close this public hearing. Next on the agenda is our business meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
People.
I don't need to.
Oh. Oh, I didn't, I didn't see. I didn't see.
No, that's.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, but there, you, you do have, uh, I'm sorry, you do have people here, because Rich Tivis isn't here. Somebody could be seated for Rich Tivis.
I'm going to see Bob Wallace for Rich Tivis. Okay, has it, everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions or comments or corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Against?
Abstain.
Abstains? So moved. Amanda, do we have any invoices?
No.
Uh, new business.
Um, can I, I'm sorry, before you continue with the meeting, can I just do the add-ons to the agenda and the amendments that we have to do? Um.
You're still on the mark.
It's not eight o'clock yet. Um, could you add under new business, twenty-two Taylor Avenue?
Indeed.
Um.
Do we have any paperwork on that?
Uh, twenty-two Taylor Avenue is going to be a, uh, it is a tile warehouse. The, um, they're looking for a special permit to, uh, to have, uh, to cross, cross some associates, uh, a special permit to put storage containers for extra warehouse space on the property, similar to what you recently did on, um, Trobage Drive. You did a similar situation there. And, um, so we're going to put that on the agenda. That'll be a nice one for new commission members to start with. Um.
On the agenda.
Under new business.
For this evening.
For this evening, just for acceptance. And then under work session, I, I, you can do this all in one motion.
Yeah.
Under work session, could you put K, um, KMP or amended permit?
Amended what?
Amendment, uh, permit. Site plan permit.
It's forty-two Plum Trees?
Yes.
Okay, I can make a motion that we add under, uh, under new business, special permit review for storage containers for twenty-two Taylor Avenue and add forty-two Plum Trees Road, uh, KMP associates for an amended permit. Second. All in favor? Days. Bob, did I hear you?
Hi.
Thank you. So moved. Okay, Beth, you want to?
So you're going to pass that out?
Yep.
So your first item under work session is.
We're gonna.
They, yeah, they, that was all one motion.
Do we need any other action on twenty-two Taylor?
Not right, we'll get to it on the agenda. I'm sorry, the first item in the is new business. So yeah, I apologize. Just, you have to learn to start slapping things. Okay. So anyways, in regards to twenty-two Taylor Avenue, you need to, um, set a public hearing because it's special permit for outside storage in the industrial zone. And I would set the public hearing for um, December.
Oh, we don't have December, okay.
December twelfth. I don't have my phone. I don't, I'll wear my purse.
I know, I got it.
That's my first name.
December twelfth, yeah.
December twelfth.
Okay. What was the name of the company? Was it Cross something?
Name of the property, the owner of the property is Cross and Associates.
Okay.
C R O S S.
Yeah.
K R O S S.
Like making those, this says a public hearing for K R O S S um, for, um, outside storage facility, twenty-two Taylor Road on December twelfth. And have it referred to all property agencies.
Second. All in favor?
I, I.
I.
Days. Thank you, Bob. Absentia. So moved. Moving to the work session, Beth.
Work session, um, at the last meeting, um, just note, I'm speaking now as administrator for the meeting and zoning. Last. There we go.
Oh, my God.
The last meeting, you asked David to prepare a resolution of approval in regards to forty-two Nashville Road. And that's, unless you have a question dealing with administrative matters pertaining to this, I'm refusing myself in many.
Determined, I also refusing myself in this.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have a question. Who do I ask since you have refused yourself and David is not.
You can ask your fellow commission members and if it's administrative, I'll answer it for you.
We were waiting on the decision to be made by the Illinois Law and Order Commission relative to this applicant and.
That was done.
Yes, that's correct. The Illinois Law and Order Commission had a meeting last night and the decision was, it was approved.
It was approved, thank you.
I apologize. I should have mentioned that before.
Okay. Okay, then.
Your comment.
Yeah.
You want to straight out, huh?
Yes. Just, just the usual. But. Excuse me.
Okay, um.
Okay.
You got reinforced?
Sure. November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, Timothy Draper, P to Timothy Draper, P O Box ten twenty-six, Bethel, Connecticut, zero six eight zero one. Re five unit development under eight dash thirty J at forty-two Nashville Road assessors map thirty-one, block forty-nine, lot zero five one, GSR. At the November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a site plan application for a five unit affordable housing development on property located at forty-two Nashville Road, Bethel, Connecticut. Um, I think this should say owned. It says owner. Mm-hmm, slight typo. Um.
Right.
Right, hang on a second. Um, there should be a comma after the C T, which is, I'm going to go there. Owned by Timothy Draper, subject to the following conditions, one through eleven. Um, reason, the commission has carefully considered the application with regard to the project's location, density, architecture and site design, and have determined that this affordable housing project will not imperil the health, safety and welfare of the community. Sincerely, Kent Stevens, Planning and Zoning Commission Chair. Second.
Do a roll call on the vote, please. Bob, position?
Approve.
Bob?
Yeah.
Ken Parsons?
Yeah.
Ken Stevens, approved.
Kitty Grant.
So moved.
Mister Chairman, can I just ask a question?
You can ask anything you like.
Um. You had one rich member who abstained. Did you see another rich member?
I did not.
And, um, so the alternates to vote.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You had to, you had to seat one of your alternates to vote. I believe that Rob.
And Rob was seated.
Rob was seated. Okay. I just wanted to, thank you.
Thank you.
Clarify that.
Okay, so moved. You have a question?
Yeah. See, Linda.
Um, I'll give the record, I'll see Linda for fall.
Alright, so Linda's voting on the motion.
Honest, please. Approved, thank you.
So the vote is seven unanimous.
Correct.
Thank you.
Next item is the hub shopping center.
Hey, at the last meeting, the commission threw a consensus to, um, ask staff to a resolution in regards to such. And we did. And as far as this application is concerned, it's, there's two parts to this application. One is the special permit and one is the site plan. So it's two separate motions that you have to do. And so, um, I'll hand out the special permit first. And the special permit, Brett, basically was you need a special permit if you want to do a drive-up. Um, they went from, they only have one drive-up proposed with regards to this. It also has to do with parking reduction, which you've done parking reductions in the past. Um, and it was my impression that you were comfortable with the proposed parking reductions in regards to the uses uh, for that. The second, um, resolution is really a standard, your standard site plan resolutions that you guys have dealt with over the years. Um, the highlights of that under reasons or conditions, one thing that I thought was very important, especially after doing the site walk was, um, no matter what they want to do over there, um, if they want to sneeze. Um, the first thing that they're going to be doing is the parking improvements and the rear of the property.
The rear of the property.
Okay? Got that? Um, I thought, you know, that was, that was a big priority a- as far as me, especially being adjacent to the residential neighborhood. So I'll give you a few minutes to look at that. Um. Beautiful, you have upstairs. Um, there's, there's two country members here. I'd like them to be able to go along with what we're doing. And I only made. You're seventy-nine? Yeah. Alright, well, give it, they can share.
I have two, I have two.
Yeah, but you need one for the minutes.
Okay.
You can share. Okay? Get to know each other.
Say hello.
Let me mail the copy to Ward. Okay. Will you need that? If you still have any revisions that I need to go through?
Andrew.
Sure. The special, okay. Um, special permit approval. Motion to approve. Um. I'm just looking. Okay, good. Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission from Beth Kavagno.
Okay, I, I'm going to interrupt you just for a minute. It's just a new format that we're doing. Because usually you would just start where it says motion approved.
Mm-hmm, right. I'm just looking for a date where it says specifically. Well, that.
We do that usually after.
Special where we're cycling, a date, meeting.
Like today.
Oh, I see. The date is up above. So this becomes part of the record, this paper copy. And that's what we refer to when we do the approvals.
I know, good.
Sorry.
Uh, but the heading on that should be, uh, site plan approval.
No, this is the, this is the permit for a site plan. What does the other one say?
Yep.
It goes to.
You got it.
This one shouldn't.
No, on the re-line, the re-line has, there are different.
Yep.
Just on the heading.
Is there another copy of the?
Yes, just on the heading.
Special, no, another copy of the special permits.
Oh.
Like. I've got the.
You're both. I have special permits.
It's one page. Okay, the first one is the special permit.
Okay.
Just one page.
Right.
Got it, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then after you do that motion, then the next motion would be pertaining to the site plan, which is two.
You don't have that one?
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Gabe. I just.
Alright, so.
Great.
On the two seventy-nine, two ninety-three. A special permit for a site plan prepared for Hub Shopping Center tax map section fourteen, block zero eight, lot twenty-one, Fairfield County, two seventy-nine, two ninety-three, Greenwood Avenue, Bethel C T, dated November eighteen twenty-two. Last revisited ten twenty-two, twenty-three.
Should be last revised.
Okay. Okay.
Last revised.
And prepared by JMC Site Development Consultants LLC, LIC engineer Robert Aiello, E number two four seven five four. The following sections of the regulations are incorporated within this approval, one through three. Reasons, the commission grants the requested special permits based. Reasons, the commission grants the requested special permits based on the. Something? This, this seems to be.
Based on the site plan?
Okay. Based on the site plan.
Prepared by J M C.
Got it, prepared by J M C, noted plan.
And that's, that was a note, okay, so we noted the plan, so you take that out. And I would say, and a traffic study.
Okay.
Submitted dated August twenty two.
And the traffic study submitted. Dated August twenty twenty one with revisions, along with a statement of use submitted with the application. The special permit becomes effective when filed with the land records of the town clerk's office fifteen days after the appeal period. And I'm just gonna go on grammar on you, it should be town clerk apostrophe S. It should be town clerk apostrophe S down on the bottom, okay? Okay, there.
No, separate motions.
Give me a second, just all in favor by roll please, Bob?
I'll probably go approve.
Teddy?
Yes.
And?
Approved.
Ken Stevens approved.
Can you grant approve?
Ultimately, yes.
No moved. Any negatives? I don't think so, since everybody you know, if we're gonna guess, alright, so moved.
Okay, now we have, and now I'm confused. Uh, read two seventy nine, Greenwood Avenue motion to approve, and it says a site plan for a site plan.
Okay, so it's doubled?
So it should not be.
It should be a site plan, got it.
A site plan, prepared for hub shopping center tax map section fourteen, block eight, lot twenty one. Fairfield County, two seventy nine to two ninety three Greenwood Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut. Dated eleven eighteen twenty two, last revisited ten twenty two, twenty three. And prepared by J M C Site Development Consultants, um, might wanna fix that, a little spacey there, but. L L C, L I Licensed Engineer Robert Aiello, um, P E number two four seven five four. With numbers one through eleven. Reasons, the commission finds that the additional improvements to the existing shopping center. Will enhance the aesthetics of the surrounding area and add to the economic benefit of the community. Second.
Bob?
Approve.
And it approved. And it approved. And Stevens approved. Alternately unanimously approved. Just for the record, um, both documents will be updated and made available to the commission with. Alright, is our next item in forty two Plumtree Road?
Okay. Eighteen Stony Hill Road, at the last meeting, I told you, I couldn't talk. Um, but you do give me the opportunity to, um, speak. At the last meeting, you came to a consensus to deny the text amendment in regards to Route Six amendment. So you have a, um. A draft text amendment in regards to your denial, but I wanted to pass this down. At the same time, I did take the liberty of looking at. Or, or reviewing the discussion that you had and your basis for denial on the four story was. The, the information I gave you from the Route Six study that encouraged four story. So it, it was difficult to write this resolution. But at the same time, I, as staff, I do still have the opportunity to share some information with you in regards to your concerns. With the four story use, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give you all copies of this and you guys list, um. Take a look at it. But I'll also read it out loud so everyone can hear it and see what I came up with. I think that the commission had concerns with the four story use pertaining to residential. In the Route Six corridor, especially when the Schmood was adopted, and then you repealed it. I do believe that the commission's main focus in the Route Six corridor is commercial. And that's what you preferably wanna see. Um, so what you did, what you've done, what I say here is the commission deleted the Schmood regulation, which was adopted. For residential uses along the Route Six corridor, the Route Six corridor study. Which I gave you a copy, um, mentions four story lounge recommendation uses for the hotel. Commission's goal in units associated with Route Six corridor has always been that the commercial development within this area is much more preferred. An example of this amendment to the regulations was you allowing for an addition to the target building. Which enabled a fourteen thousand square foot addition to an existing commercial retail establishment. Where twenty years ago, the town of Bethel was totally against a target going in there or anything of that. Substantial size, understanding the concerns associated with the possible increase in height and the possible effects it could have. Directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood, looking at the desire. To add to the commercial component within Route Six, with the commission review, the following is a potential amendment to the proposed regulation for consideration. The proposal would affect the, those properties that look like caded directly adjacent to I eighty four, as shown on the attached G I S map. I didn't, um, I wasn't able to print the map, but I'll, I'll talk to them verbally about it.
And when you say adjacent, you mean the property of running.
Well, this is, I'm gonna take the, um, um, the segment step by step. So in the Route Six zone, the commission may, by special permit, approve up to a four story building with a maximum height. Of fifty feet, provided that the property is solely used for one or more of the following, hotel motel or motor hotel. Okay, everybody gets that part. Alright, so right now I'm saying, yep, you can do four stories of a hotel on the Route Six zone, the whole Route Six zone. Number, uh, and then under that, we have a letter A, the property is solely used for one of the more of the following, hotel motel. And or motor hotel, the, okay, B, the property directly abuts Interstate eighty four. The only properties, when you look at the mapping, and I apologize, if David was here, I'd get it up there.
It's the north side.
It's a one small portion, but it's from the town line where the, uh, Skelso building is. Up to Gorilla Road, I'm not Gorilla Road, I'm sorry, up to Benedict Road. Those are the only properties on both sides of Route Six that are directly adjacent to eighty four. So it's a small section of Route Six.
It's not both sides, it's only on.
It's only one side, because you have to, have to have direct access property wise, property line wise to eighty four, alright? Taking it one step further, when you look at the topography of those areas of that side on eighty four. There's the, there, what I'm saying is, you look at the average grade of the base ground elevation at the building facade. Which faces Stony Hill Road shall be at least ten feet below the average elevation of the portion of Stony Hill Road. So when you look at the elevations, what basically we're saying is. That it has to give the appearance of being no more than three stories. When you're driving down Stony Hill Road. And that even more limits, limits more so the, um, areas that we're talking about. And there, and the most important part of this is, so say, uh, the corner. Uh, where the Nuvance building, I think it's Nuvance. Right?
Right.
It's a level, flat lot. If somebody wanted to go in and obliterate that building and use that property. What we're, what I'm saying is that there could be no significant change in the existing topography. In order to meet this regulation, so you can put in your four stories. I will tell you that, um, I know over the years that adjacent to this particular property, eighteen Stony Hill Road. Blackstone Industries has been in conversation with us. As far as going up.
Several months.
And, um, you know, I, I, I don't wanna put pressure on you, but I wanted, all I wanted to do was give you alternatives.
Blackstone is which, which one is that?
It's the white building between the diner.
Yeah.
And eighteen Stony Hill.
Okay.
Large white building.
Yeah.
They make knives, I believe. So, and but I do give you, um, the, uh, the resolution of denial also, as you requested. Um, the only thing that you will notice with that is, I could not make mention of the Roots of Study. And usually, when you do something like that, you wanna be, you know, you want the backup of the study, but I couldn't give it to you on that.
So this is pretty limited number of properties.
It is extremely limited, and I, I took into consideration, um, you know, the existing hotels that are there, for example. And I speak freely about it, um, I cannot see Best Western. If Best Western wanted to come in and go on four stories, I think that's an intrusion into the, uh, adjacent residential neighborhood. I see the same with my hotel, you know, the higher you go, the more intrusive you will be to the existing residential neighborhoods and that, those areas.
Yes, interesting.
And also farther down the road, even though they're larger parcels of property, if they go up. You're, you're gonna see, I don't wanna even mention the streets because it'll create, but I, I just, you know, I just.
I, 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 I think this is a, uh, an excellent idea, uh, it gives that, that one. It only addresses the properties that, I mean, that said, that are actually in that, down curve there. And will, will, will only be facing eighty four, and I, I, so I have no problem with it at all.
Yeah, I think it's pretty reasonable.
I, I agree, um, you know, the concerns with the precedent for other properties, this limits it.
I think it.
I don't think anyone had a problem with that.
I think it does exactly what we wanted.
Yeah.
Bob, comments, thoughts, questions?
Well, I think that's what, one of the things we were discussing last week was, you know, what effect it would have on other properties, and this truly. Narrows it down to, uh. Anything. Is, is uphill to the eighty four, right there on that side of the road.
Right.
And I think that is a positive, and, and part of the, part of the presentation was that this has to be. Built i- in this manner in order to rehab the front end of that, that property, which is a good positive. Thing in this instance also, I think. Okay, that's it.
I think it's a low impact win-win, you know, it's a win for the owners, it's a win for the town.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm only sorry that this wasn't where the commission went. Um, because I suspected based on what we had seen, that. This was going to be the outcome, um, I just wanna know, because we've had some of these in the past. Is there anything in this language, in, um, the number two that you've added here, Beth? Is there anything here that can come back and bite us in the future? We've had that a couple of times, one with what?
What I did was, I looked at each individual property along Route Six and tried to apply this regulation. Or this amendment to the regulation, and the, and there are none by limiting this. Because before I got to the eighty four aspect of it, I was dealing, I was looking at strictly from a topography point of view. And then I said, no, because there were other properties. So, uh, for example, where, uh, the restaurant is, Elga's Kitchen, that large piece there, there were several large properties. That I had concerns, so then I said, well, then I looked at it again and I stood it butts to eighty four. And eighty four was really the key to eliminate him from the other section pertaining. And I don't feel that it's unreasonable or uncommon for you as a commission to take, um, topography into. Issue when you're creating some of your regulations, because you're looking at it from a point of view of the potential to increase. Commercial development with very minimal effect on adjacent residential neighborhoods.
Last meeting, we weren't thinking about that property down on the bottom.
No.
We're thinking further up.
Right, absolutely, because of what you've been through.
Linda, Paul, any comments or questions?
Nothing.
Okay.
Is that good or bad though?
I, I don't know what I'm feeling about it.
Okay, no, I'm.
We have to make a decision on this tonight or in this, on to the next week, or we're running out of time?
I, my only concern is I've, um, in regards to tonight, is that there is a change in commission. You're the ones that sat in this, and I don't wanna put pressure on any of you.
No, that makes perfect sense.
I don't wanna put any pressure on you.
Yeah, speak up, you got something to say, but go ahead.
Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely, sure. I just, I, I.
If you don't like it, that's not a big deal.
It's just the, 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 the four stories thing, I mean, we just made this change, um. And it was not just, we didn't say just four stories to three stories for, um. Housing or, um, residential home, we said it across the board. Um. And as far as the Route Six study goes, I mean, what year was that done?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
Why not seven? Why seven?
It was, it was around there, six or seven.
So it's a little outdated, in my opinion, so not referencing it one way or the other doesn't bother me at all, because, I mean. Let's be honest, the world is a different place than it was in two thousand and seven. Um. I don't, I just, uh, I, I'm, I feel like, uh, there's, I, I'm just against four story buildings in the town of Bethel.
And I, I, I appreciate the, the aspect of it being commercial, definitely. Um, so I'm, I'm torn, that's why I didn't wanna, you know. Yeah, and, and I was the same way, Paul.
Yeah.
My thought, that I came around to it again was. If it appears to the public.
Yeah.
In the thoroughfare, as a three story building.
Yeah.
Is there any real harm in allowing in that short segment of properties that, above the highway?
Yeah.
Uh, to allow that additional story in the back, so that it still appears as a three story building from the front.
I, I just worry down the road, you know, to someone that has another motel hotel in the area, hey, you made special adjustments for them. What kind of special adjustment could you make for me?
Right. And that, so I just don't.
I don't wanna set, like, in a, and I, I, I love all these, uh, restrictions, um. But again, I just don't, I'm trying to look down the road, what's, what possibly can be coming later? Um, cause there is some still undeveloped property up on Route Six, not abutting eighty four, it's usually, I believe, on the other side of the road. Um, but I don't wanna see, you know, in a year or two, someone come in and say, hey. You made some special things for these, that, that, or can we, or us?
Okay.
That's where, that's how I feel.
Okay, and you know what my response is? Because you have a strong regulation, at the time of discussion, when you develop this regulation. Um, you took into consideration all the other parts, you took into consideration other parts of Route Six.
Yeah.
And the reason for combining it to this, to abutting eighty four or topography was that you. Do not wanna see four story buildings.
It's great.
But you don't wanna see four stories all up and down Route Six.
No, no, no.
And you don't wanna see that, that's the bottom line.
That's the bottom line.
And you know, I was, I, I was so adamant against even the Schmood.
Yeah.
Uh, but looking at this and looking at where it is and what it's restricted to, to that commercial area. Not to be put into a residential area.
Yeah.
I find, I, 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 I can be very comfortable with this. I find, I I I I can be very comfortable with this.
Could we add to this that it's not abutting a residential zone? Just to further protect us for down the road? Like if someone came in later and said, oh, I amend this and remove the interstate eighty-four.
Well, they can submit an request of amendments.
Of course, but so.
It's a legislative act.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean you're gonna approve it.
Yeah, that's, and that's what, that's my feelings, I'm still, I'm still torn, I'm very torn over the whole thing.
Ken, I have another comment. I just, you know, i- i- it seems like we're using this as a good commercial use for that property. And taking advantage of the proximity even to eighty-four. Not, not just for the topography of the land to make it look like a three-story building, but we're. It's it's a positive use of commercial property on on Route Six. And and that was more the intent of getting rid of the four stories. And the number of stories was it wasn't necessarily it, it was, you know, getting rid of the residential four-story was was, I think. Part and parcel, and part and parcel of the Route Six study, whether it's new or old. Was to take advantage of the proximity to eighty-four and the sewer line, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, you know, what we've tried to do with anything we put into Route Six.
Thank you, Bob.
Because that time, the water line and the sewer line was new.
Consensus?
I was gonna say, do we have a consensus to reverse our position from the last meeting, do we wanna stay where we are?
I'd like to make a motion. I know, cuz consensus is not, it's not binding. So the motion.
You don't need a motion for consensus.
I know. The motion is that the commission has carefully reviewed the application. And has determined to approve. The proposed text amendment pertaining to an increase in height from three stories to four stories. Within the Route Six zone under the following condition. Following conditions to A through D. Do we need anything else?
You need um the reason for approval. Which is that it's in conformance.
The reason for the approval is that it's in conformance with the Route Six study. And the um. Promoting commercial development within this area.
Second.
Roll call, Bob.
Uh I'll I'll approve that motion.
Robert.
Yeah.
Kenny.
Yes.
Yes. Danny.
Yes.
Paul. Yes, Ken Stevens, yes, unanimous, thank you.
And I also had a bit of an emotional impact here. We have somebody that wants to develop and build up. That business. Um if this were, if this were going to be denied. We we always need to be cautious with the, we plan to. That's always a concern, cuz we plan to doesn't necessarily mean anything. But if this had been denied. He stated very specifically that he was not going to do any. Um remediation work on the existing hotel. So um I'm absolutely delighted.
I believe he's um. This is all over the place.
Yeah, well.
I believe she's associated with Kirkfield Inn. A national chain.
Right.
That is planning on.
Right.
I think we need that.
Alright, so the next item on the agenda is.
What do you got?
Neil R. Marcus text amendment allowance for vintage classic car restoration.
Okay, the vintage car um regulations you asked for. You wanna look at that? I I think I have enough, I'm not sure.
If you do, we'll break it.
Vintage car. Regulations again, um. I I I know I put it in my report, I don't know. If it was, I I didn't get to listen to that portion of the meeting, but. So anyways, the the proposal wants to allow for vintage collectible and classic cars. And um. Well, okay, so when you look at the first portion of this regulation. It says vintage cars, so and so forth, section five. I thought it was important. To um. Add some amendments. To the regulation. In regards to um. Uh let's see. We talk about that it's gonna be a special permit in the industrial park zone. In the industrial park zone, you're limited to, um you have to have a minimum of two acres. Right, so um that that was an important concept to maintain the consistency of our two industrial parks. Now, yes, granted, this wants to go into the industrial park share, but you have to. When you're reviewing the regulation, you have to take into consideration it affects. I said Clark Park for share, I apologize, this, that's what happens. Um. There is a general permit that they have to get through the state of Connecticut for repairs license. I don't like the idea of opposite of vehicles for sale, but you can do that with a uh repairs license. So if you're gonna sell cars, you're gonna be endorsed. Um there's no outdoor storage, no outdoor display, or outdoor repair of vehicles. No signage advertising the sale of used vehicles that the site can be displayed on any structure on the site. So basically, what you're doing is, you know, I did give you um in my report, I believe, the definition. Of what vintage collectible in classic motor vehicles are. Um I think the applicant pertaining to this had no issues with the regulation itself. And my husband is very pleased that I had the time to sit and start understanding all these different terms regarding cars. I did not enjoy watching Jackson Pertram auctions, whatever it was. Thank you.
For the record, my two thousand three Honda Element is a classic vehicle.
There you go.
How about my two thousand five Honda Accord, which is impressive.
Most of the classics I own were junk. Most of the classic cars I owned were junk.
Do we need a motion to pass?
Yes, you do. Um if you were to um. Do this, you uh should would be, have an effective date of December first.
We discuss.
Sure.
Um is there any thought to expanding this at all?
Well, it's not, it's it's commercial.
No, I know that, as far as, as far as the outdoor storage concern. Like amending that to have it. I mean, no one in their right mind would for our reason to leave it outside. But if it's, you know, if they're working on it, it's outside, you know, if they have to wash it or something. You know, that could be an outdoor construed as an outdoor repair. Who we've possibly put something like uh that's only to be done in the rear of the building or. Behind uh some screening to share, you know, to keep it from the other. Uh other businesses or sightlines, which, anyone else have any thoughts on?
My thought is if you do that, you're starting to open into interpretation.
Exactly.
Here, we're pretty clear, no outdoor storage.
Yeah, I think then you would have to get into specifying what type of work could be done, and then you get into a lot of specifics, like you wouldn't want oil.
And what is storage and what is just washing the car.
I mean, I I definitely appreciate the spirit of.
Yeah, I'm saying ways to to open it up a little bit more to to invite more of this kind of use into the industrial park, I think this is a. I think this is a great, great use.
You have no idea who's in here, right?
What's that?
Really?
You have no idea.
I have some idea, but I guess I don't know all of the ideas. But again, I would like to. What's that?
Know the Lamborghinis?
On Crowbridge?
No.
Yeah.
I mean, it's already starting, it's basically, it's getting a name for itself.
Yeah.
As being a classic car and or a storage or. It's, when we get to this, it's really interesting, I've learned a lot.
Again, I I I have no problems with it as written, I support the application. Uh wholeheartedly, um. Again, I just wanted to think if we wanna, if. For me, I feel like I would wanna open it up a little bit, but if the rest of the commission doesn't. And we're comfortable moving forward the way it's written, then so am I.
Well, he, what I'm hearing is. That, what I'm hearing is your concern that under the word repair. That that may have multiple meanings and and, you know, scrubbing up a car, washing a car, which is clearly gonna happen outside.
Yeah.
Might land either under or outside of that, is that?
Kind of that, and and if they're uh, you know, gonna be out, a- again, if they're gonna be outside, just, just. Moving a car and ends up sitting there for a few hours.
Nobody's gonna, zoning is not gonna be going down there.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Greenwood Avenue across from CBS, which is a very, no plaza, another car lot like that, that's not what we're looking to have.
No, and and I I don't want that, I don't think that'd be appropriate use down there either. So again, I I I'm comfortable moving forward with that, with this, the way it's written.
I think there's discretion, I know what you're talking about.
Somebody leave the car at one night.
That's what, you know, again, we're talking vintage and collectible car.
I said, I made a motion that we threw the text amendment for allowance of vintage classic car restoration at um. Roll call?
No, that is not correct. I'm sorry, you're amending your um zoning regulations. Partaining to section four point eight A. To include. Um the allowance of vintage collectible. And classic motor vehicles, I mean, just referred.
In the IP zone.
In the IP zone. And refer to the um. Amendment that you have in front of you.
Section four dot A, that's correct.
Correct.
Item five.
Right. A through D.
A through D.
Do you need another second?
Second.
We have a roll, Bob?
Approved.
Ken Stevens approved.
Paul Stanley approved.
Can I ask you to amend your motion to include your standard reasons for approval? Which are that it's in conformance with the town of Ethel zoning rights and the plan of conservation development. With an effective date of December first.
What she said. Motion to amend our approval.
I really apologize.
For an effective date of twelve one twenty-three.
Second.
What else did you say? I'm sorry.
Uh you have a standard line when you're doing these amendments um for a recent condition. Town of Ethel zoning regulations and in conformance with the concrete.
Second, please. One favor. Next item. Forty-two Plum Trees Road, I have to refuse myself. No, I started to do that, you corrected me and told me you put me there first.
No, I'm good, no.
Um at the last meeting, you asked for consensus. To um. Prove the amendment as it was submitted. So what I did was, um I took the uh original approval. That was done and underlined the portions that approval that were changed according to the amended plan. Those are obviously the date, the application is now for an eleven unit. Um proposal, the uh. The site plan has an amended date of ten thirty twenty-three. Um your unit count was changed in regards to um the affordability. You picked up another affordable unit in it. And uh dealing with architectural, it's the change in data, the architectural, so everything else falls back into line.
Okay. Okay, so at the November twenty 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 three meeting, the planning is only commissioned approved. It's like plan application, the point eleven unit affordable, given the oneness. On the property located at forty-two Plum Trees Road, Ethel, Connecticut. Owner by K and P Associates LLC, subject to the following conditions, one. Through seven, the commission has carefully considered the application. With regard to the project location, density, architecture, and site design. And have determined that this affordable housing project will not imperil the health, safety, welfare of the community. The commission feels that the targeted population by fifty-five order and the opportunity for the homeownership aid to town. In meeting the affordable housing demands.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? We, yeah, so approval, motion to approve. Bob?
I approve.
Bob, Alex, Ken Parsons, that Penny?
Not seated.
Okay, Penny?
I've seen I was at the last meeting, okay?
Um see, yeah, mission member.
We'll see this.
Oh.
You just see somebody.
Oh, they end up to see, see how bad I am? Okay, Linda, could, would you be seated for Penny? Sure. Okay, so, and.
Now that I'm now seated, I approve.
I I'm not understanding what just happened here.
I am not either. Well, I thought we were just gonna make a, we made a motion to approve.
Who stepped out?
I did.
Ken.
Ken, so we just seated one person, Linda, for him, right? Or are Doug, are you supposed to be seated for Ken? Will you see?
Okay. You seated Linda first and then went to seat another person. Refusing yourself, so.
She's not recusing.
I'm not refusing, I'm just abstaining.
All right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Do you have that? All right, you're gonna say, um, there's seven members, five yes. One abstain.
We we we.
Hold on.
Okay.
Oh, I, oh, you didn't vote?
No. Okay.
Everybody vote?
Yes, you have six yeses.
So you have six yeses and one abstain. And your abstain is Penny?
Penny.
And Linda Curtis was seated for Ken, uh Ken Stevens.
Can I just? Linda had been seated when somebody else. Whatever, right, but was, was it Linda seated for somebody else before?
No.
No.
Yes. She was seated for me for the forty.
In lieu of Linda, I love you, Linda. Somebody please seat Doug. As.
Well, so he's back, so when she.
Yes, but Ken, but Ken is now recusing, so.
But we did Linda for Ken.
Yeah.
Who's on first?
I understand, I'm just asking that perhaps instead of.
Oh.
That we give. Doug an opportunity like.
I think the point is, well, they.
Yeah, to get into the mix.
But the vote has been taken, so you can't do anything to fix it.
Okay.
I enjoyed it.
And and we we are getting there. Amanda is keeping track of those types of situations for future reference. She started what? Right?
Yeah.
Because we, this has come up before. And going forward, we will continue our best to try.
We had seven to approve. Say, oh, six, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion passed. Yeah, thank you.
You have no more, don't you?
Uh no.
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes, 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 uh but we didn't close the hearing for one fifty.
Yeah.
Park Road. I'm gonna request that you add one fifty Park, Parker Park Road to your agenda for.
I'm gonna request that you add one fifty, Putnam, Putnam Park Road to your agenda for discussion and possible resolution.
Yeah.
I didn't make that recommendation.
Wait, until we're finished?
We'll say that's in the form of a motion.
Uh-huh.
Motion to add one fifty, Putnam Park Road.
Second.
To the agenda.
So moved.
Kitty?
So moved.
And Ken?
Ken.
I'll move.
Everybody agrees to add it?
One favor.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes. So moved.
One fifty, Putnam Park Road. What do you guys think?
I like it.
It's two, two, two matters, there's a text amendment. And a map amendment. Two different, uh, things. Alright, so. I, I think the additions to the text amendment meets the text amendment. Standard. You know, you, you wanna do the protection, you're looking at your state highways, things of that. Along those lines, then when you're looking at your state highways, you're looking at the zones, R forty, R A's. Where you see how the overlay district port on Route fifty-eight, which contains much of that space.
I have a quick question, okay?
Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, the fellow brought up a question about anything coming out on Ditmar Road. Uh, through the back of that property. That's not possible now, right? The way the regulation is gonna be written?
There is, um.
Wetland.
There. There's been a lot of talk with the, with that property in relation to this property. That particular property recently, um. All it has as far as access to Ditmar Drive is a twenty-five foot accessway. A twenty-five foot accessway, the property itself has no frontage. On any other property, right?
The other road.
Right, but that twenty-five foot accessway, no matter what someone wants to do in regards to that property. Only allows them to build one single family home. Coming off of Ditmar. Now, when you look at its relationship to the Route fifty-eight property. You're talking about due to topography and ponds and things of that nature. I'm not an engineer. But it's, in my opinion, if you're gonna expand that and build a road to do houses or condos or things of that nature. You would have to build a bridge. Large bridge.
Does that person go where? Across the wetland?
Yeah. Cross the pond.
But then they still wouldn't be coming out in Ditmar, they'd still be being serviced off fifty.
Right, right.
Right.
But I, I would, I would hope, and I think that there possibly could be good consideration when you look at that rear property. That it is almost totally surrounded by, uh, the state of Connecticut, Putnam Park. I think Redding Land Trust touches, touches it somewhere, the Bethel Land Trust, and. I would hope that that consideration would be taken in too, and I think it would. I cannot speak for anyone, but I, I just have a, I do not have a bad feeling, I have a good feeling.
Is there any way of, of, of them putting an extra driveway out that back road?
Yeah, Ditmar, you mean?
They have, I don't know, I don't think engineering aspects associated with it, but I do believe on the accessway itself. Twenty-five feet now, you can't put a road on twenty-five feet, you need fifty.
That's right.
A driveway.
They can put a driveway and they can build a house back there. It's twenty acres.
Okay.
I think that they're headed down the right path now. Before, with the previous owner, I'm not sure.
That's why, I just wanna be clear, what, what's possible in the future, you come out of that, that back way?
A house.
A house, could be another house facing on.
That I would say yes.
Right.
Definitely, there could be, definitely be one house, there may be two, I don't know.
I was gonna say only one, on that many.
I don't know, but I think that the, the focus is on the front portion of the property with direct access to. Route fifty-eight.
To do a subdivision year. You, you, what's my.
I mean, please, I, as staff, I will tell you, over the years in relation to this property. Uh, uh, the other property, I believe, it's, it was called the Lipton property or whatever.
Hmm.
I have seen. Some. Con- conceptuals that. Were not in anybody's thoughts as far as that particular land. Uses associated with that land.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
The primary survey wrote it sixty acres, or sixty some acres?
No, I, I don't know off the top of my head, Bob. Uh, twenty. Thirty, uh, eight, twenty-eight. I think roughly between twenty or thirty.
Twenty and thirty, okay.
I'm not sure.
If, if you, if you, uh. Given, given what they wanna use the front piece for, piece facing on fifty-eight. To me, a, a better use, that would be like some hiking trails or something that would. Lend to their, you know, spa atmosphere. They said they're gonna have, you know, boats or canoes or whatever on the pond. For people to use, you know.
Right.
We can retreat.
And I do think that at the time when they come in for development on the front portion of the property. I hope that they have some ideas on how to use the rear portion. And you, at that time, even though that rear portion of the property may not be part of the application. You can certainly make strong recommendations on its use for future.
Okay.
Can I, uh?
Yeah.
It's two different lots though, right?
The lot you're only, no, right now, you're just.
Talking about is the front lot has eight acres.
If you were to ask me today if the rear parcel could be used for this, this venture, I would say no.
But the rear parcel, if we. Your, uh, suggestions here, the rear parcel couldn't, because it doesn't have frontage or direct access to a state highway.
That's correct.
Uh-huh.
So, it's a moot point.
Correct.
So I think, and the applicant was here last time, and she said to us, now, I don't know, I'm taking her for face value, that they have no plans for the back. She just wants to do, develop the front. Um, I think it's a great use of the property, um, and I think with, uh. Staff's recommendations here as far as the frontage and the, uh, minimum five acres, uh, it's a slam dunk in my opinion. And again, it makes the questions about the back a moot point. If, if the applicant bought it as an investment, someday build some houses or something back there, great, um. I, I don't think, uh, with that twenty-five foot access and the wetlands between this and that. It's kinda isolated back there.
Uh-huh.
Unless she wants to build a massive bridge, then. We'll see the bridge again. My.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I think this would be a great use of the property and a great addition to the town.
Um. Couple of thoughts. Um. First of all, as you just said, is that we have no plans.
Yes.
And that. Has frequently come back to haunt us. Um, is there a way, I understand that it's a minimum of five acres for this? Is there a way to add language? That. That acreage has to have X number of, I, I have the memory of a goldfish right now, so forgive me if I'm not, not forgetting word. I'm not coming up with, with correct language. It's like they keep going around in circles going, oh, look, um. To add what, whatever it's called. You know, X amount of space between that, the outskirts of that five acres. Or whatever property they have and any abutting. Property that is not theirs. Is that something that we can add so that we can avoid? Any kind of thing down the road?
I think that, um, the best answer I can give you in response to that is that with these, with this overlay zone. You do look at them on an individual point, matter of point. So in looking at that, you have the discretion under the special permit to decide, you know what? Doing your parking area twenty feet from the adjacent residential property, that's not gonna work. You need to reconfigure it, you need to pull it back, you need to pro- provide proper screening, lighting, things of that nature, because. That's why it's, when you say a minimum of five acres. You want to have the flexibility of saying, hey, look, you have five acres land, you have to figure this out. It's not gonna work.
So.
Special permit gives you flexibility.
Okay, so what's the answer to the question?
Well.
Is. With the special, when we're doing this special permit, do we?
You have the discretion to say, I do not like. The side yard. Say, say it's ten, twenty, a parking lot is twenty feet from the neighbor's yard.
Right.
Right? And there's gonna be pulling in and out and noise and all of that nature. You do have the discretion. Because it's a special permit use.
Okay, understood.
To say you don't want to, you want that moved.
Okay, so do we use that discretion now or later?
Later.
Got it, thank you.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I've got a little fog, I wasn't understanding the question.
Like I said, goldfish, you know, it's like, look it up. I, I think this, this, uh, this, that, uh, that throwed up. Prevents that back piece from becoming anything bigger because of the frontage and the, and the regulation. Right, exactly, okay. That's it.
We got a consensus?
Do one, one thing to point out, I don't know if it was mentioned previously, but the same owner owns twenty-two Ditmar Road. Which is connected to the back of that lot.
Hmm.
It's a twenty, it's a twenty-five foot. Accessway.
That's just the access, this, this picture shows a house on it.
And the house is not, is owned by. A, uh. A Jason Lord. At one point, the previous owner bought, there's a residential, there's a residence there, twenty-two Ditmar Road. There's a house on it, correct?
Yep, that's.
Okay, so originally, there was, uh, a Mr. Lipton or something who owned all this property, right? Including one fifty. And what he did was, when he carved off, uh, the Lamp Estate, right? Sold it to this property owner that currently owns it. He bought the house at twenty-two Ditmar. At the time, when he purchased the house. There was rumor. And innuendo that he was gonna take that property. Tear down the house, and that would give him access to, uh, the majority of the land to the rear of them, okay? So what he ended up doing was, he, um, with that twenty-two Ditmar. They ended up getting an easement to cross the property. And bring a driveway to the rear.
Uh-huh.
Okay, it, it's a long. But it's good, good questions.
Uh-huh.
The first thing you would do is text amendment? That's gonna be with that amendment, this is the, you know, I didn't give you the text amendment, I gave you the amendment.
Yeah. Yes.
I said, um, to propose the text amendment for neighborhood, actually, district as proposed with the following amendment. So that means that all the previous material is included.
Right.
You want to need?
Yeah. Uh, I couldn't. No. Oh, wait, hold on. No way to have. I'm gonna make up my own.
Motion to approve. Propose text amendment for the Neighborhood Services Overlay District as proposed with following amendments. Under section D permitted uses. D dot five bedding breakfast. Items A through C, minimum of five acres, maximum of twelve bedrooms. Shall have frontage on and direct access to a state highway. D six, personal service to the staffs and script. Items A and B, minimum of five acres. Shall have. Frontage on and direct access to a state highway. Reasons, the commission has determined that the text amendment is in substantial compliance with the comprehensive plan. And the town of Bethel zoning regulations, this amendment would be effective on December the first, two thousand two hundred years. I'll have a second.
Second.
Bob, position?
Approved.
A problem? As.
Approved.
Penny?
Approved.
Ken Stevens approved.
Kitty Grant approved.
Paul Stanley approved.
Unanimous approval, so moved.
Nice.
If it moves, Ben?
Um. Stephen, I mean, if you want me to pass out the map amendment approval.
Would you please?
Yeah.
Again. We're gonna wait for Beth, is she coming right back?
I think so, she went to go find her person.
I think.
Go for it. Thank you.
Motion group group, proposed zone change map amendment prepared for entitled Begle LLC. Depicting property situated at one fifty Putnam Park Road, Buffalo, Connecticut, tax assessment map forty-four, block forty-seven A, lot one ninety-one. From the R eighty zone to the Neighborhood Service Overlay District. This map consisting of eight point one eight six acres dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, was prepared by Sydney A Rap Land Travelling PC. Zachary S Red L, L I C seven zero four two zero. Reasons, the commission has determined that due to the uniqueness of the property and varied use associated with it historically. The closed overlay zone will enhance and preserve the existing land. It should also be noted that the change is in substantial compliance with the Plan of Conservation and Development of the Town of Bethel.
Second.
Bob, position?
True.
Bob, a per. Ken first.
Yes.
Penny. Ken Stevens approved.
Kitty Grant approved.
Paul Stanley approved, unanimous approval, so moved. Anything else to add, Beth, or we took you down here?
I think if I add anything else, I think you want to be out of town.
Alright, any commission comments?
I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, I wanna welcome the two new, uh, members that we are seeing in the audience, uh, thanking for coming tonight and listening to us. But I also would like to thank the, the members that are going off the board. Uh, Linda and Penny. Penny, I, I always, uh, respected your opinion. I, uh, didn't always agree with it, but I, uh, defended your right to have your own opinion, and, and a lot of your opinions. Sometimes changed my opinion on things, so thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you, and Rob Wallace.
Rob Wallace, Bob.
He cares, that's why he's leaving him on.
It's already gone.
He's out of here.
I can, I can't see him hiding over in the corner.
Yep.
Thank you, Bob.
Made it, thanks, Bobby. It was a busy day, with a lot of votes going on high.
Okay, so, um. First of all, thank you for that, Bob. It has really been an honor, starting out as an alternate. Not knowing anything about planning and zoning, except somebody asked. You know, when people ask, you know, you step up and you do. Um, it's really been an honor and a pleasure, that, you are a delight to work with.
Oh.
Well done.
Penny, you are.
Well done, you. Um.
All of you.
So, so some things that I just offer for future consideration. Um, there is some language in, in the regu- in the rules and regs and all of that. That deals with issues. In fact, by omission, so as opposed to saying. This is not, that something specific is not permitted, it just doesn't.
It's not allowed.
Is not allowed, right. So. For example, Beth and I had a long conversation about, um, certainly one specific, but others that. They pop up, um, Airbnbs and Verbos. That are within.
Dealing with that now. With CBA, that'll be interesting.
Right, so, um, as you go through the regulations, and I know you do, you do that on a regular basis. I would urge you to think of the totally outside of the charts. Possibilities. And you can't, you don't legislate for like one detail. But it's really worth considering, what are the. But it's really worth considering, what are the? What is the most outrageous possibility? And gear your language sometimes towards that. Um.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
The perfect example is the marijuana regulations that we have.
Exactly.
We were the first in the state to have marijuana wrecks. Because we had to go outside of the box, because we had a medical marijuana place.
Absolutely.
And and you're absolutely correct in what you're saying.
Absolutely, so just imagine like like the craziest possibility. Um, I got brought into it because somebody at a at a gathering wanted to, what on earth was going on at. You know, a location in town, I said, I'm all, I don't know, um. So that was one thing, the second thing I'm gonna just continue to say, what I've said before. Is that when the commission is in public hearing. The the commission members must maintain stone face. Um, can't give even tacit approval or disapproval in a public hearing. That can only come back to in our detriment. Um. So that was the other thing to to think about. And the third thing, what I learned when I spoke to people. Um, as I was, you know, door knocking and stuff like that, is. The town is, it's not polarized, but there's a really big divide over what people want in the town. People want. Places for people to live, they want housing, not affordable housing, but they want housing that's affordable. And right now rent prices are have skyrocketed. Um, they want homes that they can move into if they're downsizing. Um, so that they can stay in the town and they want homes. That their kids can move into should they wanna come back to Bethel after college or doing whatever they're off doing. Um. And I would just urge the commission to be aware that nothing in the town is one hundred percent yes, no. Um. One person's, God, what is that doing there, is another person's, holy cow, it's fully. Rented out, how did that happen? So, um. It has, it's really been an honor, I have learned so much about this town. Uh, and it's really been wonderful and um. You know, to be continued.
Hey.
Thank you, Penny.
I'd just like to as well welcome our two new members. At the next meeting. Um, Rob. This is our second commission together. I don't know if that's bad luck for you.
Also, I don't come back, this is this is it for me, I I don't come back to this on the.
No, this is it.
This is it, we're done.
Oh, okay, I thought I thought it went up until the uh the end of the year. Well, man, I got a lot done today.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, we we have cleaned up.
The new, the new board that come, you know, it's not a new board, the new members that came in. You saw them.
Lot of new members.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure, I think that the people on this board are very dedicated, very thoughtful. Um, the land use people are just.
The new people coming in.
And one thing I really learned is, Beth, you know, they always say you can't please all the people all the time, well, sometimes you can't please.
We've we've had some meetings, believe me. Or I thought that that was exactly the truth.
Linda, have you also learnt to zigzag?
Too too many of my neighbors know, and some when something is going wrong. I I stay up walking.
Thank you all very much.
Oh, and one other thing, to the new people, stay the hell off social media. Because they will make you crazy.
That's the best advice.
As a commission member.
We will go through that when they come. When.
Now, now we can argue, honey, we can like. Yeah, we can actually like have a public.
We welcome you to come and be part of the meetings. Members of the public. And again, thank you very much for your dedication to the town, for your help.
Public comments.
And that's next on the agenda. Any comments from the public?
Ken BJ had had her hand up, but I don't know. Why? Before, she's lowered her hands since.
I can't see.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak?
You do, you need to take yourself.
I don't see any hands raised.
BJ, I had seen your hand sort of metaphysically raised.
Um, I did have a question when you were talking about the four stories. But uh I know that I wasn't not allowed to talk, so I was just sort of hoping I could squeeze it in, but. You know, not to worry.
Do I ask?
Um, you once had an application out there for a residential hotel or a a hotel with one residential floor.
That's correct.
There it is. So would this? Um. Potential four-story?
No.
Hotel? Be allowed to have a residential?
No, it would not.
Okay. That was my question.
Thank you.
Okay.
On that note, anything else from the public?
Uh, that was, I should have mentioned that, and I appreciate her bringing that up. I should have mentioned that with um during, when we were having our discussions. Because I did look into that aspect of it because what was proposed to the public.
That wasn't four stories, I think, though?
No, it was uh, no, I, yes, it was four stories. They started with commercial and they wanted to sprinkle it with residential apartments. And the answer is no.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's hear Ramondo's.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you and good night.[1791.98]